Not quite like when you left.
Thank you for going so much.
Where did you buy those?
Target is nice.
I think we do.
That's nice.
I don't like it when they're bound.
The horny museum, like the transportation museum?
Yes.
Just in the office, just in the office area?
It was as much as you've been around forever.
It's been remembered now by the Coliseum.
Yes.
When they have old bump my car from the Elishes, the old Elishes.
Oh, that's cool.
They had legit.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Um. I think of.
Oh, yeah. In the gum tree.
No, that's probably worse.
Thank you.
That's the same.
Is the recording started? Oh.
Very early.
Are we ready to go, Jackie? Okay, great.
All right. But it was like traditions.
Yeah, I. I.
Yeah, I miss the old Elishes.
I know that, but I can't, I'm sure if I'm watching what I'm doing. It's small or dilapidated or I have some, something just to say it in my head. It was, uh, this request.
Probably also because we're small.
All right, everyone, thank you. Welcome to the Englewood City Council Study Session on Monday, October 1st, 2018. And we are all here, save for Councilmember Berentine, and I hope she's on her way. And first, uh, agenda item up tonight is the proposed expenditures using bond premium discussion. We have several representatives here from the city. And, uh, Right Away Services Manager Larry Nimmo will help introduce everyone and discuss several proposed projects which we received earlier in the week.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Protam, Council, appreciate you letting us present tonight. Um, like she said, I'm Larry Nimmo. I'm Right Away Services Manager slash Project Manager for the Englewood Police Department Headquarters. It's not working.
Closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Closer. Um, next to me is Commander Vance Fender. Uh, and next to Vance is Maria, Interim Director of Finance, Maria Saboda, and she's got a couple of guests that she'd like to introduce, too.
Um, good evening. So to my right is David Bell. He is a managing partner at Stiefel. They were the financial advisors that assisted the city on the bond purchase. And next to David is Andrew Wheeler. He is an analyst for Stiefel.
And I'm trying to get the, uh, make sure it's. Right here. Thank you. So tonight, we're here. Um, I'm here to, to basically open a very, what could be a difficult, but, um, impossible even controversial, but definitely necessary conversation on the use of the bond premiums for, um, different projects, uh, involved with the police safety services ability. Um, in the communication, I think I've highlighted a number of, uh, different proposals or different projects slash equipment purchases that we're going to be looking at. That we want to be looking at. Staff considers, we've talked about it and, and with Maria and everybody, we do consider that all of these purchases are eligible for, for funding through the bond premium. Um, they've all been highlighted and, and open for that. Um, one of the first things I did was I reviewed the November 6th, 2017 council meeting study session, listened to it in, quite intensely. Um, in there, um, I know that, uh, the city manager emphasized a number of projects. Um, Fox Building was one of them. The canopy was actually not, but the Fox Building is one of them, highlighting that, uh, we were looking at things that had a 20-year useful life, which all of the buildings do. Uh, other items that were highlighted in there was some of the equipment necessary for police operations, which would be the record management system and SWAT and the, uh, radios. Uh, one thing to note is you've already, in January of last year, we did approve, or January of this year, we did approve the SWAT vehicle out of the premium fund. So, um, the one, uh, so these were all things that were discussed in that, in that meeting. And so we're just kind of bringing them back because it's time to start moving on them. Um, one thing I'm gonna, wanna highlight is, as Eric loves to state, is Newton's Third Law of Motion, that every, for every action, there's an opposite equal reaction. One of the things we do know for fact is if we do not fund some of these projects out of the bond premium, we're gonna need to find a way to fund them. If we do that, it's gonna have to come from somewhere. There's only X number of dollars in the pot. And one of our concerns is if we have to take this out of the other capital projects, what could get pushed back or what could get deleted? So I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Um, kind of one of the things that we didn't, we had meant to kind of include in this document, and we didn't, is I wanted to do a quick project summary of where we're at right now. Um, this was kind of the bond premium, but we really did want to kind of bring you up to speed on where we're at with everything. Right now, Phase 1 is, is moving along per schedule. Uh, construction's on schedule. Uh, we have a current completion date of, should I wait? Okay. Um, we have a current completion date of February 4th of 2019. Um, from there, we'll begin the move-in process. Once that's completed and everybody's moved out of the old building, uh, we'll start the Phase 2 construction. Phase 2 is basically the demolition of the existing parking, or the existing police building and a construction of a new parking lot. And we have that scheduled right now as a current completion date of August 5th, 2019. Um, couple of things we wanted to highlight currently right now, owner contingency, and we've kind of got an updated contingency figure based on some, um, uh, we wanted some forecasted numbers, things that aren't in the encumbrances yet, but we know are gonna be coming. So we show an owner contingency right now of 204,000, and we know the contractor has a 404,000 still up in their GMP. Um, we are experiencing some challenges. Um, some of the things that we need to make modifications to, uh, we had to add, was almost 50,000 to add, uh, evidence locker refrigeration. They got missed in the original thing. It's things we've gotta add to. Just a number of things that we have found as we move forward. Some of it also is design modifications. Uh, sometimes things didn't work the way that they were designed, and we need to make some changes to them. And then, of course, in any construction project, we're always dealing with unforeseen conditions, things we just didn't know about that are, that are arising. So I'm gonna kind of speak on the two projects. Um, and then, Commander Fender will speak on the, um, kind of on the SWAT stuff. So, uh, that's a picture of the Fox Annex Building. It's actually pretty nice. Um, I took that off Google Maps this morning. Um, so what we know about this building is it does need some work. Um, there's some problems with the building itself. Um, what we're trying to intend is prime, you know, one of the challenges we had was we deleted the two, two-level parking structure, which is where a lot of the equipment was gonna be stored under, in that covered parking. So that's part of what we're gonna do. I actually got those two out of order, I'm sorry. Um, we actually are gonna take that and use it, build it for evidence storage for, and there is a conceptual map in your packet, evidence storage, vehicle storage, uh, things like the SWAT vehicle, the command van, what else were you planning on putting in there? Motorcycles, um, and a lot of the SWAT equipment. One of the things we do know is some of those things right now have been stored down at the service center, but if we were to get into an emergency situation, one of the things that we recognize is the logistics to go get those vehicles out of that, go down to the service center and get vehicles versus going across the street or any of the equipment we're talking about, um, that's just not good logistically for an emergency situation. Um, currently, I've got it listed as a DD, um, design drawings. They're technically more conceptual drawings in your packet. Um, it's basically a discussion we had with the police, uh, DLR, the architect, CBRE, the construction manager. Um, they put together a proposal of about 100, 1.6 million, um, or about $256 a square foot, which compared to the existing building, or the new building at 428, it's pretty good. But that is a, that's our rough number. We're gonna work continuously as we start moving through the design and everything else. We think we can bring that down. We're pretty confident. I've had a number of conversations with AMP and CBRE, but, um, there's just some things at that initial concept drawing, they're not really willing to get too carried away with their pricing. They wanna make sure they're covered. Um, I kind of understand that. The second thing that we want to bring is a project, and this one, um, depending on, if you could give me a nod, as to whether or not you want me to bring it. Um, during the original development of the GMP, we only put in, we only could afford half of the parking canopy. So the parking structures, we removed the two-level, has now gone to a single level, and only half of the stalls actually have covered parking, or the canopies over them. Um, so we kind of, it's been excluded. As I've looked at that and thought about it, um, I really wouldn't, we're, right now, uh, the design is already included. Uh, that was included in Phase 1 GMP, so the design's being done. So we will have a full design to put all of the canopies in. What we don't really wanna do is, our thought process at the moment is, we would rather move forward with construction while the parking lots, while the first canopies are going in, just include all of the canopies, because to come back and do it at a later point in time, we're gonna disrupt the police department in a major way. You know, just to, to come in there, have everybody take their cars back out on their laddy and, which will be a one-way, so that'll be a little more challenging. And so we just kind of looked at it and thought, this really needs to get included in the Phase 2. The other thing, too, is what we recognize is that, um, and that's actually, uh, the COR from AMP, that's actually, they've looked at it and put a price to it. Um, the advantages there is that we don't have any additional mobilizations or anything like that. The whole team is onsite. I mean, this AMP, CBRE, DLR, this is all of our same team. So there's no real, new mobilization or new additional charges to come in. Basically, it would just be constructed with Phase 2. So some cost savings, there's some cost benefit there versus if we had to come back and, and do it at another time down the road at some point in time. So from there, um, I'm gonna pass it on to Commander Fender to talk about some of his items.
Sure. Thanks.
Um, so I'll just highlight, uh, briefly a couple of the things that we're talking about on the police department. Two of them are quite large, the record management system and the radio system purchases. Um, City Manager Keck highlighted the record management system back in 2017 as one of the things that we wanted to spend bond premium money on. So in May of 2018, uh, this year, we migrated the entire CAD system to Tri-Tech, a computer-aided dispatch system, and that was a county-wide project that was, uh, actually purchased by, uh, Arapale County E-911 for all of the law enforcement agencies in the county. So, uh, we all migrated to, uh, the Tri-Tech CAD system. Well, that governance board, made up of the CEOs of all the organizations in the county, uh, made a decision that almost everybody's RMS system in the county was also, uh, about 20 years old or more. Uh, we rolled our current, um, RMS system out in 1997, 1998 was when it went live. Um, since, uh, that time, Logisys is the vendor for that. Logisys is, is from, I've received several, uh, memos from IT. IT's been really working with Logisys on, on our record management system. And they've advised that Logisys is, is probably close to going bankrupt. Um, so they are charging us for every small item that we need updated. Uh, the updates are coming less and less frequently, and IT's concerned that our RMS system's going to crash. Um, so they'd rather try to work on it on our terms rather than on an emergency term to try and get a new record management system in. So, uh, as I said before, the governance board for the CAD system, uh, got together and got with Tri-Tech, uh, the manufacturer of RMS, and, uh, has moved forward with getting, uh, how to, bundled pricing, uh, for, uh, lack of a better term, for an RMS system. Uh, Arapale County Sheriff's Office is already, uh, going live with that system now. Um, and then Greenwood Village, Littleton, Sheridan, us, and Glendale are all going to also, uh, try to go onboard with Tri-Tech for the system. The cost saving is, is enormous. Uh, if we were to go on a standalone system, we would be looking at 800 to 900,000 dollars for a standalone system of RMS. Uh, right now, our highest number that we've received is about 520,000, uh, to go with this, uh, shared RMS. It would be the exact same hub-and-spoke concept that we're using now with the county, where Arapale County would be the hub, they would, uh, really be the clearinghouse, uh, and, and most of the IT, uh, heavy lifting would be done on their side. The RMS is web-based, so there really isn't a lot of, uh, hardware issues for us on our side. So we're gonna be asking for, uh, the money for that new record management system. Uh, the next one is the radio system purchase. Um, our radios are, uh, well, how do I put this? So there's approximately 60 to 70% of our portable radios are, uh, an old-style radio that came out 15 to 17 years ago, uh, on our portable radios, the ones that the officers wear. Um, those radios, uh, are all Motorola radios, and they're all, um, getting end-of-life. Uh, the manufacturer's no longer making them, and, uh, as Motorola said, they will no longer be, um, supporting them, uh, at some point here in the near future. Um, also, all of the metro agencies are moving to what's called a P-25 Phase 2 compliance, which is a lot of, uh, technological speak about, uh, being able to be encrypted, over-the-air programming, um, GPS-enabled, things like that. So, um, to equip all of our officers with those radios, the rest of the officers with those radios, as well as, uh, new mobile radios in our cars, um, and the updates that are gonna be needed for the dispatch center for that are also gonna be approximately 504, uh, 504,000 dollars. And we'll be presenting that formally to council on the 15th of this month. Um, the other SWAT equipment purchases we talked about very briefly, there's, uh, approximately six or seven of those, uh, literally they're on your list, uh, crisis negotiator throw phones, uh, ballistic shields, uh, Polaris utility vehicle, um, a lot of, uh, video and incident command, uh, cameras, uh, to include ones on our, to go on our incident command vehicle and the armored rescue vehicle. Um, updating the exterior of our, um, incident command van, which we've had since, uh, 2007, uh, which we bought, uh, using forfeiture, I'm sorry, 2001, which we bought using forfeiture money then. Uh, we've had it 17 years, and it's got extremely low miles, and it's been climate-controlled parked since day one. Uh, and it is in amazing shape, but it needs a little bit of updating at this point. So, uh, the first part of updating we'd like to do on it is on the exterior, uh, to bring it, um, all the LED lights and, uh, the, um, emblems, the stickers, it still says Department of Safety Services and some other things on it. So, uh, we'd like to get that changed out as well. Um, and a couple of other, uh, pole cameras and some other various SWAT equipments, some night vision and things like that are on that list as well.
So from here, um, I think that we'd like to turn it over to Maria to talk about the financial implications and, and all the ramifications of the bonds, so.
Great, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank David and Andrew for joining me this evening. Um, I asked them to join us so that they could answer any questions that you have, specific questions related to the transaction itself, if any remain, um, and also to fact-check me as I'm going through my notes. So, um, if you could flip the slide.
Sorry.
Okay. So, uh, the information that was provided to you in the memo covered a lot of these topics, but I'll, I'll briefly, um, talk about each one of them, and, and certainly if you have questions, uh, we'll, we'll talk about those, uh, either throughout the presentation or at the end, however you'd like. Uh, so just to, um, as a refresh, um, the ballot parameters, um, I'd like to refer to the presentation that was actually included as part of, uh, the memo, um, that was given to the council on November 6th in 2017. Uh, it was the general obligation bond proceeds and premium discussion on page three. It talks specifically about the ballot language, um, and it was also, um, in the official statement that was dated June 7th. The language states that the debt, including the premiums, um, that could be used for related capital improvements and to the extent that funds, uh, are available to address safety services needs with or without a premium. And last week, I had an opportunity to speak with Bond, Bond Council regarding this language, and the items that have been reviewed with you tonight fit into these categories because they are costs that are ancillary to the purpose of the building itself. So while some might be capital, um, purchases, the other ones that would not be capital purchases are ancillary to the needs and support the purpose of the police department. So Bond Council has told us and confirmed that we can use these funds, the premium funds, to fund these projects. So I wanted to make sure we were clear on that, um, tonight. Um, as a reminder, the original transaction was 27 million dollars in bonds utilizing a 5% coupon. Stiefel, our financial advisor, uh, recommended to us that we actually issue 5.25% bonds because of our outstanding, uh, debt position. Um, and also, there was a lot of, uh, demand for the bonds themselves. So with that, a premium of 5.6 million dollars was generate, generated after the cost of issuance, um, and also the underwriters discount. I, I wanna remind everyone, too, that the final power amount, the maximum annual debt and total debt service, uh, remained within the city's original approved parameters. So the city did not pay any more to generate, um, the premium funds that are available to us to use. So the proceeds generated from the additional premiums, like I said, can be used for these purposes, and Stiefel has issued the opinion, and they have stated, that across Colorado, this is the most common use. Um, they aren't aware, and I don't mean to speak of you in third person, but they are not aware of, uh, any, uh, public entity using a premium, um, to repay debt. It, it can be, and I'll talk a little bit about that and why it would not be advantageous to the city to do that. Um, but, uh, Stiefel has also made me aware that, um, the majority of, or all that they're aware of have used it for these sorts of purchases. Uh, the timing, that actually has come up as well, um, regarding when funds need to be spent. So I was very clear in the memo, 5% needs to be spent within the first six months, 85% within the next, uh, three years of the date of issuance. And the unspent funds, if any, would be subject to an IRS audit and many questions. So we certainly want to spend the funds. So the alternatives, I think this is, um, one of the most important topics in the memo because I was at the public hearing where this was addressed, um, whether or not the city could use these funds to pay down the debt at the 10-year call period. Certainly, the city has that right to do that. Like I had said, um, we are aware of the situation within the state of Colorado where that has been done. The reason that it's disadvantageous is because the premium can only earn a 2.25% interest rate per current tax laws. So what happens is we would be able to use those funds to pay down approximately only 4.7 million dollars. And if you think about the 5.6 million that we have available to spend, we would lose approximately 1.1 million in lost opportunity cost to be able to use those funds to purchase the items that we're mentioning here. So that, I think, is, is really the decision point, um, that you all have to make, certainly regarding the use of the, the premium, to either use it for the purchases or to possibly pay down debt. If you go to the next slide, that's a little small. Any way we could make that bigger, maybe? I can't see it from back here. No, I can't. Let me go to my notes just for a second. So, um, I wanted to make sure that you had, um, tonight, a summary in table format of the discussion that, uh, Larry and Vance just went through. Um, but starting at the top, the discussions regarding the funds received. So the 27 million dollars were the bond proceeds. Uh, I just mentioned the 5.6 million for a total of, I have to look at my notes, sorry, can't read that, 32.6 million that is available to us to use. I wanna note that that excludes interest. Um, the interest changes, and when we do come back and talk about the status of the project, I, I can talk a little bit more about the interest that's been earned. So that money would also be available, but it's not included in this total. The spending encumbrances and known costs that are to be encumbered to date for the police building, uh, the 26.8 million and the SWAT vehicle that was just mentioned of 265,000 dollars, bring us to a total of approximately 27 million dollars. So the funds available to be spent as of, um, August 31st, 5.6 million dollars. The recommendations that you've heard, um, tonight are listed, um, one by one, but I wanna mention a couple of things. The police building, uh, the, the amount, the 204,000 that was also in the presentation, that is the amount that should be added to the 26.795 to get us to a total of 27 million dollars of total spend. And, uh, Larry and group have identified an approximate additional contingency above that remaining 204,000 or 205,000 of 250,000 that should also be considered as part of the financial equation in putting this all together. So if you take a combination of what's been, um, already, um, committed, spent, encumbered or committed to be spent, um, plus the contingencies, as I mentioned, plus all of the items that were mentioned tonight, it would bring us, um, it would, it would leave us with approximately 1.6 million dollars of total remaining funds if all of the recommendations would be approved. And just up above that line, I wanna mention the requests that, um, were discussed tonight, total approximately, uh, 4 million dollars, the 3, 3,972,026.13 to be exact. So that is a summary of the financials, um, for the police building and the requests that you're hearing tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Berentine.
How much is it gonna cost us to pay the five, it's like 20,000 dollars back?
Could you speak up just a bit more? I think it's hard to hear.
How much is it gonna cost us to pay the 5.6 million dollars back over the 30 years that we've added on here?
That's a good question. Well. Remember, so, look, I'd get about four here, and then sort of pay all that off. You have that million dollars actually to pay off this hand? Our bonds.
So you're, you're talking about the entire premium?
Could you speak up just a little bit louder? It's hard for people to hear.
So you're asking about the entire premium of 5.5 million dollars? How much was its debt service in theory?
Well, there isn't a theory on it. We actually do have to pay that back, and there's interest on that money. And I would like to know how much that additional 5.6 million dollars is going to cost us to pay it back. I mean, I've, I've heard how, I mean, that we're rather proud of garnering an additional 5.6 million dollars out of this when I kind of thought we were only borrowing the 27 million, which has a huge debt service on it. But we garnered the extra 5.6 million, and you said if we paid it, paid the debt down, that we wouldn't get as much bang for our buck. I need to know, in order to make a good decision, how much does it cost us to keep that money, to use that money? What is the payback on it? What's the debt service on that 5.6 million dollars?
Okay. We need a calculator.
Councilmember Martinez, maybe, if you, do you wanna ask a question while they're figuring that out?
Sure, unless, did you have a question on that question?
Well, this is a form of information. Uh, you're requesting 3.9 tonight or 5.6?
3.9.
3.9.
Would you like it broken down for the 3.9 as well?
Yeah, and the 5.6 is fine.
Great.
Cause I would hope that you'd have it for the 27 million. Certainly, that should have been part of the, uh, information that was provided to the taxpayers when they were voting on that, as to the maximum of it. But I don't think that they were quite aware that we were gonna, that just in that word "bond premium," that we were gonna be upping the debt that they would have to pay by another 5.6 million. So I think it's only our fiduciary responsibility here to know what the debt service is on that 5.6 million dollars before we use any of it.
Before we get to the specific question about the 5.6, so in the ballot 2C language, um, we did communicate and, and the taxpayers did vote, um, shall the city of Englewood, uh, debt be increased 27 million with a repayment cost up to 47.9 million? In the OS statement, which is available, uh, it was 42.9 million. So versus the 47.9, which was in the ballot 2C language, the, uh, incurred debt of 27 million dollars plus the interest was 42.8, and that is in the official statement that was issued with the transaction.
Right. So roughly, because, so when you're in a, when you're in a period of such yield compression where yields are very, very low, which they were a year ago, um, investors don't want par-bonds to have a coupon of 2% or 2 and 1/4%. So what I'm gonna tell you is if we did them all as par-bonds, your interest rates, your yields would have been higher than what these were. So roughly, give or take, the extra 5.5 million would have run you a little over 300,000 dollars a year in debt service, or about 6 million dollars total, still within the parameters that the voters approved at the ballot in November.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you. How much is the debt service on the 5 million?
About an extra million dollars of interest on 5 and 1/2 million dollars. So you're roughly about 300,000 bucks a year.
Okay. Then your, um, question before in answering what had been stated before about just taking the money and paying it back and paying down the debt would actually be a wash. We'd pay down this debt, but we also haven't included, so what we would lose in paying down the debt from what we could use in that advantageous spending money, um, would be about the same, cause she said it was about 4.6 million dollars. So we would lose about a million dollars, but we would also end up paying about a million dollars extra in interest. We also haven't calculated that if we paid down the 27 million dollar debt by an additional 5.6 million or 4.6 million dollars. What would the, we do- what would the reduced amount of interest that we would have to pay on that 23-point-whatever million dollars be? Because we would be saving some interest money because we would have paid it down. So we might lose that million dollars, but I would like a little bit better assessment of how wise it is to spend that money. I know that the taxpayers said you could not go beyond this limit, but I don't think they intended that we would do everything we could to go as close to it as possible. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're being wise in making this decision of whether we should spend the money or not, and I don't think I have all the information yet. So if you could provide the information, and I'll take your word, that we would lose money on some kind of leveraging of this. But if it's going to be a wash, that's how much we'd have to pay for the money in the end, then we need to also just get the information on how much, how much less the interest would be, the debt service would be if we paid the $4.6 or $4.4 million off of the $27 million or off of the 32.
I'm not quite sure where you get to the "it's a wash" part. So the Internal Revenue Service basically says to you that once you have, you have spent money, and it's $5.5 million, that's already been issued and already done, that you can't redeem those securities and invest at higher than what the arbitrage yield is on the existing bonds. Your arbitrage yield is only 2.2%, okay? So at this point, what we have is coupon ranges of 5 and 5 and 1/4% that's being chased by 2% reinvestment money.
So we wouldn't be reinvesting it?
No, you would. That's how you have, that's how you have to get rid of theoretically to fees existing bonds that have already been issued a year ago, would be to take proceeds out of the $5.5 million. You'd only be able to redeem about $4.4, $4.5 million over the next nine-year period of time. So we'd have to create an escrow account, put the money in the bank, and pay down those bonds that are callable in 10 years from now, or nine years from now. And the economic cost of that is a million-plus dollars, because you can only invest it at 2.2%. I mean, the honest truth is, the time to have this conversation would have been a year ago, and we did have it a year ago.
Tried. Yes, you're right.
Well, yeah.
But we also, I mean, because we also had conversations about 30-year encumbering vehicles and other things that seemed to kind of ended up happening as well.
But the debt service on these bonds only goes for 20 years. There is no 30-year encumbrance.
I apologize if I misstated the timeframe. I apologize. For 20 years, I don't think too many people can answer their vehicles for 20 either. I just was, from the information that you provided, you said that we would lose about that million. Then I wanted to know about what we would save on the interest, which you have provided. That seemed to come out to be a wash, and I would want to know, overall, on the debt, if we paid the 4.2, 4.4, 4.6 back into reducing the debt, what the difference would be on the, on the payback cost of it. But if this is, I see the mayor is not comfortable with this. So if there's some other way you can get the information for me, that would be great.
I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for. So I'm just, I think you understand what she's asking for. Whether or not you agree with it or not doesn't really...
I think I got as close as I could for here on a calculator.
Great.
I'm going to probably go back to the office and do something a little bit more mechanical, but I don't know that it's going to be significantly different than what I just said to you.
Okay. Great. We have one other question.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
We have one other question. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that some of the design changes that we said were, we need to readjust, are those included in this $27,000 or $27 million estimate? Or are those in addition somewhere on here?
So when we're talking about the original police building?
Yes, with like refrigeration and things like that.
So the $204,000 is what we're sitting with right now in our contingency.
Okay.
We went ahead, as we've begun to move forward, there's always a concern whenever we get into demolishing a building that we're going to run into things we don't understa- oh, thank you, Vance. Get into things that we don't understand. And then as we move through Phase 2, which is the parking lot, the canopies, and then one of the things that has come out, and we still think we're going to fit it within the GMP, but rather than a fence, we're going to try to build a wall around the parking structure to put a little more privacy, because we really don't want the public in there, you know, looking at vehicles and seeing what's going on or who's there, who's not. So we're working through it. We may need a little extra money for that, but we're, right now, we're almost within the GMP. We've gone to a precast concrete wall to get around it. So that's one of the changes.
So for right now, we're considering that the $204,000 contingency is going to cover that?
We're planning that the two, all of our goals are to get between the 204 and then AMP's 404,000 GMP contingency. We're planning on that. But by the same token, we just wanted to make you aware that there was a possibility, and if we needed to, you know, we would come back and talk about it. But if there was a need, if there was a possibility that, you know, we could run into something.
Sure.
It's a building, and we, a couple of things are still coming up.
Okay. And then on this, in our packet, the Adamson bounce cameras, the last one on the list, there's a highlighted item there. Is there a reason that it's highlighted?
No, we were having computer problems.
Okay. So it's all, it's still included? It's not like that's optional, like that's what we need still?
No, it's just, we found, I guess, I don't type directly into iCompass. I type into Word and do it. And when we copy and paste, that costs us some, yes.
Sure. I totally get it. Just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Yeah, no, nothing. Everything there was something that we had planned on proposing.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Sierra.
So regarding the current, the current equipment, the SWAT vehicle, the motorcycle, the van, are they currently at the Fox Annex Building? Or were they, or was it the service center?
We just moved the incident command vehicle to Station 37, to the fire station.
Okay.
That would not fit in the Fox building.
Okay.
That's a large, large, large vehicle. The current armored vehicle we have now and our equipment van are now sitting across the street in the Denny Miller lot, and they've always been stored out in the open, not climate-controlled, in our rear parking lot. The motorcycles are currently at Fox. And I'm trying to think what else. I think that answers your question.
Correct. Okay. So they are at different locations?
Correct.
So then, another question I have was regarding these requirements. Looking over the capital prioritization, I didn't see when exactly we were expecting to pay for them, but what was the timeline for getting those replaced originally?
For getting which items replaced, I'm sorry.
Just the upgrade to the, the software, what is it, the records management system, the radio system, radio systems. They obviously had a different end of life or a different trajectory in terms of when we were going to replace them originally without this.
I don't have that information. Maybe City Manager does.
So the RMS system was targeted for 2019. The Motorola radios also for 2019. And the Fox building, we've had issues with the Fox building that have been ongoing for a few years now. And specifically, the roof piece of that building has basically failed. That needs to be replaced, and I don't know what the cost breakdown just for that roof repair would have been. But holistically, as the department has looked at the necessity of trying to store items all in one location, more adjacent to the PD as opposed to the service center or private storage, one thing that I saw that wasn't in the packet, and I apologize for this, but currently, the police department pays a little over 30 grand a year to store its items in the service center. We pay an internal service fund, the service center fund, to do that. This would obviously obviate that. Obviously, $1.6 million of spend on the building would take many, many years to recoup, you know, paying $30,000. But that would be a savings that no longer would be paid internally out of the, out of the pocket of the PD to the service center fund. So the answer to that is, the Fox building in and of itself would have had and necessitated some sort of repair either this year or next to keep it functionally, functionally working and to protect the integrity of the assets that the city owns. You know, this is an interesting discussion tonight because a couple of years ago, when we had the initial discussion for the bonds, the intent was to sell premium, and council obviously voted for that. For that express purposes of obviating or eliminating the competition, if you will, with the scarce resources that exist in the city's budget for public safety-related expenditures. And as you've already done, previous council, I know you weren't here, member Sierra, did approve the SWAT vehicle. But the intent obviously always was to bring forth items, public safety-related equipment that fits underneath the rubric and structure of the bond itself, to again eliminate the need for competition in the future. So this discussion of paying down debt, while I appreciate that, kind of flies in the face of trying to accomplish the goals of satisfying the needs for the city. You're going to have to borrow, if you don't pay for these materials now, you're going to have to pay for it later. You're going to have to make more difficult decisions amongst capital projects and other competing needs in the future. This would eliminate that need. And again, I respect the fact that perhaps some people felt like, hey, I thought we're only approving $27 million. But again, with the parameters resolution and discussion ahead of the bond was that not only was it the building, but it was also equipment. As the council may recall, last November, I think it was November of 2017, there was a discussion about, hey, we don't want you to buy all new rolling stock. In other words, we don't want you to buy all new police cars. But there were significant capital project needs that would again be in the city's budget at some point in time that would compete with other capital projects. And this bond, as a blessing as it was for our community to step up and say, we want you to have this new building and, as the bond language said, other equipment that is ancillary to and fulfilling the goal of providing public safety, that would help eliminate that competition of funds.
Mayor Protimus.
In the budget, on page 291, the Police Headquarters Construction Fund, were we anticipating already that we're spending this $5 million? There is only $1.4 million left before we ever are having this discussion.
No, but those monies have to be appropriated, but I'll let Maria Sabata take a look at that real quickly, because I don't have the budget book in front of me.
There you go.
So obviously, I don't feel prepared to talk about this particular piece. Larry had mentioned at the beginning of this that if we need to talk about the status of the project, I'd like to come back, because I know some information was also in the August financial summary that was presented by Kevin last week, that I'm in the process of talking them about, because I think we've got, we're kind of mixing apples and oranges right now about what's been spent, what's going to be spent, based on CBRE's estimation of the original, which is what we're presenting here tonight, versus what's in the budget. If that's required to make a decision, we certainly can bring that back at another time. I'd like an opportunity to review this with my team, because again, I think we're comparing apples to oranges right now, because some of the dollars in here are in these totals as the estimated actuals or adopted budget. So if I could ask to come back with more information, I'd appreciate that.
I'm fine with that, but here's my concern. We're going to be asked to make a decision tonight on this, and we don't have all the facts. And I have a problem with that.
Any other comments, Councilmember? Councilmember Questa?
Do we need to make a decision tonight?
No. Actually, we were kind of just hoping to get kind of a head nod. As far as Vance's stuff, they'll be coming back in two weeks for formal approval. All of this still requires formal approval. There's nothing, we're not asking for any approval tonight. We wanted to present it all, so at least you knew what we were looking at. We were kind of wanting to open the bond premium discussion. You know, can we use it to, say, finish the canopies of the Fox Annex or some of the equipment here? So we're kind of mostly looking for a consensus, not really a formal approval tonight.
Can the consensus wait?
Well, I'm willing to have people tell what they need or say, if you want to.
The discrepancy is alarming. So, you know, if we were to approve this list, and I've realized that all of these are utility things that we need, that leaves us with 1.58, according to this, whereas on the budget, we're 1.4. And I don't see, and being unable to speak to, does this 2019 proposed budget with the 1.4 remaining, does that account for the 3.9 million in expenditures, or does that not? Because if it does, then why would there be the discrepancy between the two?
Because of the...
Please.
Go ahead. Because of the timing of the spend. Quite frankly, some of it could still be spent this year and encumbered. So I think that's where, we're mixing apples with oranges. What we're looking at in the budget book versus what we're presenting here, this is the spend over the life of the project. It's not talking about 2018 versus 2019 spend. That's why I'm saying the total, when I showed the total, you could see that, if I could, the total expenditures, let's see, total sources of fund, the 32.9 million that's in the budget book, it does include interest. And like I had said, I wanted to do a reconciliation of interest at the beginning. That's also excluding from my, excluded from my financial analysis. We weren't prepared to talk about the budget in total or the project in total tonight. It was truly, we're not going to exceed the total amount of the project. I guess that's the main thing that I would like to say, including the premiums, based on the reconciliation. The timing of whether or not it's in the 2018 budget expenditures versus the 2019 is a different discussion, and quite frankly, changes up until December 31st, because we don't know what's going to be encumbered versus spent. So I guess the only assurance that I can give you is showing you the financial summary that shows the total spend with what is remaining after you would consider these expenditures is the $1.6 million approximately. And the timing of the spend could change, because budgets do fluctuate. I mean, you will be approving a budget based on the best estimate that we have today on what we're going to spend in 2018, but again, it can change.
Sure. Thank you. When we, this came up briefly at the end of, maybe it was the last study session, it might have been at the last study session. And I thought we were going to get a more comprehensive view of where this project is right now. And I get that we're trying to cut this portion out, and it's apples and oranges. I still view this as a comprehensive pot of money that the voters approved. And I would like to see it as, here's exactly where we're on the project, here's these projected expenses that I think the police department would like. That would give me a better snapshot of everything and where we are right now. I have a profound respect for what Commander Fender and his colleagues do, and I certainly want to get them everything they need to ensure public safety. But I, it's a little bit too bits and pieces right now. And I really would welcome the discussion further, if I can get a more comprehensive shot of it. And is there an urgency then, or can we?
So I think there is a bit of an urgency on this. These are things that if we do not approve, we are going to have to do in a different way. I think there's a more of a philosophical conversation that we need to have to step out of the weeds of how much each thing's cost and whether or not we agree to the, to the, I mean, if we want to do the nitty-gritty and the weeds of what project and how much it should or shouldn't cost, that's one thing. But I think what they're looking for tonight is, are we going to continue to go forward with utilizing the premium? A year, year and a half ago, maybe even, we, as a council, said yes, we will. And we actually set it up so that it would be leveraged quite well, and it made a lot of money, extra money. So, and the ballot initiative accounted for that and put, set the limit on it. That is what citizens voted for. We are now required to think, how are we going to utilize it to the best for this? If we don't use it, if we're not going to allow premium, then that's probably the conversation we need to have. Are we going to allow premium or not? Whether it's this project or that and this much or not, I'm not sure. I don't particularly want to get into the specifics of the projects as long as they qualify to be there. And that's what I wanted to know legally, why, whether they were qualifying, and they are. So I don't know if that helps at all. I would like to get some consensus tonight so we know whether we can, we can move forward on these.
Up there, 26795046, the number at the top there, right now, that is our current projected, that's, we recently received a new projected cost from CBRE, and we asked them to include a forecasted cost, things that we're not encumbered yet. So I'm not sure what's in there, but I'm working off of what we're working with in the project. That is where we sit right now. If everything were fine today or no other cost came up, that's what we would end up spending right now.
To date, not to the end of the year, right?
No, for this, for the building.
All said and done.
Yeah. Now, that's what we're highlighting is, that's a couple of the things why I brought them up, is we still have some concerns. We've got some things coming up that, you know, we don't know where they're going to be. We know that we have 204 sitting right now in contingency, and we know that AMP has 404 in their GMP contingency. So we're sitting with about $600,000, still work through a lot of the issues in the project. We also came back with just the 250, just because we wanted something else in there, just to kind of, to mention it.
If I could clarify to you, the 404 is included in the 26795, is it not?
Yes. The 404 is actually in there. That's our, the owner contingency, the 404 is part of the GMP, which is included in that. Correct.
Councilmember Questa had his thing up still, so keep going.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. I agree that with the philosophical perspective, and I agree that the language of the bond... question is probably permissive for these items. Having said that, I'm not seeing the rush. You're mentioning that we need to do this now. There were, I mean, for instance, the radios and the RMS, which really seem like critical components of what you do, those aren't scheduled to be replaced till 2019 as it is. We're sitting here in October 1st. So those aren't even due to replace for at least four months from now. So what is the urgency on getting this vote on tonight?
I thought there were some projects that had to get started or you needed to know. The Fox building really is really, that's the bigger one.
In what regard? Is that why we need to get the rush on that?
Fox building. So there are two reasons why. You already have a contractor who's mobilized on site primarily adjacent to this site. If that contractor were to leave and then you ask him to cull back, you will pay more in general requirements to get that project done. Not to similarly, we have a project management contract with CBRE who is the owner's representative for the city. If they have to leave and come back, there's a loss in continuity. So the timing really is to try to reverse engineer the completion of any improvements to the Fox building with the completion of Phase Two of the city's police building project as a whole. So that's really one of the main drivers. And you're exactly right. Perhaps there isn't a huge push, perhaps yet on the radios, although they do take a long time to order. It's not just, they don't have them on a shelf someplace and radios are us at Motorola. And specifically also with records management system, the city's project management and the IT department isn't prepared to take that on right now, but is preparing to want to address that in 2019. And that will take a contract obviously negotiated ahead of that as well as an allocation of resources of staff, as well as an allocation of resources of funding to get that project to be able to be implemented within 2019.
It's actually, I apologize, it's actually estimated that the implementation of RMS could take 18 to 24 months.
Councilmember Questa, does that answer some of...
Yes.
See, I mean, it's not like, oh my goodness, something's going to fall apart if we don't do this tomorrow. It's really the planning of it all.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I'd like to add on to what Eric was talking about. As far as the two big capital projects, what we're coming tonight to you talk about is the Fox building, but we need to get that designed. So the three to four months that we're looking at is necessary to get it fully designed and get it to where I can bring it to you as a change order to AMP's contract. The same thing with the canopies. They're designed, but we need to get the materials on order, we need to get it scheduled. Those are both, that's why we're kind of here now because these are both projects that we need this three to four months by the time we get ready, by the time we get this building finished that we're ready to go once the Phase One is complete and we move into Phase Two. So it's, there is a bit of a timing issue there.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Thank you for putting all this together. And we did have a conversation probably a year or so ago about the usage of these funds. And I believe the voters did vote for this because they wanted the police department to have whatever they wanted and whatever they needed to do their jobs and keep our community safe. And I think this is a really important part of that. So that being said, I will be supportive of using the bond premium funds for these additional projects for the police department.
Thank you. Councilwoman Berentine?
When are you anticipating the completion?
Of Phase One.
Of the police building?
The police Phase One, which is this police building, we anticipate completion February 4th.
Phase Two, August 5th.
And Phase Two is August 5th of next year.
So we certainly would have some time if they were, I mean, it's not like they'd be leaving the grounds in order to do that if you said it's three to four months. So I'm not sure that...
Two...
I'm not sure that right tonight, as it seems like it's being put as part of the budget piece of this, so I'm not sure that right tonight was out some additional questions. I think when somebody, when the Mayor Protem asked a question if the money's actually there, I think we need to make sure that we're, that we haven't encumbered it, that we know what's, what's being spent and what's going on with it. Could you go back to the slide? I thought you said that there were some things that had been taken out of the current project that in order to stay on budget, the canopies and there were some things that were originally designed, were originally intended and presented and then they've been taken out.
The two level parking structure was originally in, Eric will have to speak to that.
And then the canopies you were talking about.
The canopies in order...
Can you go back to that slide?
Sure, can. So the...
The parking lot canopies were originally in there because it was originally the intention to go ahead and secure the vehicles for, correct? And to have them under?
No.
And then it was taken out?
The original plan was to actually have a parking garage, a two-deck parking garage. That was, that cost because it was all concrete and it was precast was about $3 million. When that was taken out, then it was a flat, large parking lot. In order to meet the GMP, because the council, the guaranteed maximum price, the council is very clear, the building shall not cost more than 27 million. In order to meet that, we were only able to provide half of the canopies that were necessary. And so that left out the other half of the canopies, which now a change order request, if we were to do that, would be the $605,000.
I understand that piece, but that was taken out after it was approved?
No, it was before, in order to give you the GM, the guaranteed maximum price of 27 million, that's when half the canopies were proposed to be delivered.
Was it taken out after it was voted on or was it taken out before?
It was taken out after because the council was very clear as to what the cost, total expenditure was.
But the, what we were presented with for 27 million was structure, parking structure that was going to secure it. That's what people voted on and then the plans changed after it was voted on. So that was done in order to bring a project that had already been presented into line with the actual cost. So that's all I was asking. So I forgot my answer now. And I am concerned about those kind of issues that we were presented with, here's the cost, here's what it's going to be. And then after it passed, it was like, oopsie, can't do that, that's going to be too much and we won't come within our timeframe. And then later coming, coming for this piece of it. So I appreciate your information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So tell us what the timeline is for what you can handle with a delay on this. I'm not sure, maybe Councilmember Sierra, where you stand on it, Councilmember Questa. We could do a little bit of a checking in here, but we may not have enough to go forward tonight. So what's your timeline first?
The design, because we, it's going to, like, right now, we're basically conceptual design. I put DD, it's DD, but they're very conceptual. It's basically a little better than a napkin sketch. So it is going to take us two to three months to get that building fully designed. It'll be two to three months before I actually would come back with a change order for the final price of the Fox Annex building. I did talk to AMP briefly about this when I asked them for this, for this actual price and they basically said they need kind of a notice within the next 30 days to move, be able to move forward to start getting that, the canopy materials ready to go. So I guess that's probably 30 days. I was planning on right around about a month if we get a consensus to go, to come back with the parking lot canopy because I have a COR sitting right now. I just need to do it. The Fox Annex building, I just want to know, is it something you want us to move on? If so, we need to kind of give them the nod to get started with the design and start working through that. My hope is I would anticipate, well, my goal would be that we would lower that cost substantially. Not, you know, not half, but by a few hundred thousand.
Thank you. That's helpful. I'm going to do a round robin. I'm going to start by saying I'm all for this. I think the premium is, it's expected. You see all the other cities that have examples here. It is, it is an expected norm. It is the best way to leverage funding that our taxpayers have agreed to pay. To me, it's a, it's the important part of finishing the project off. So starting with that, why don't we go around and is anyone else willing tonight to support having them move ahead? What I'm worried about is we're going to lose time and time is money whenever you're doing projects like this. That's why it's going to fluctuate. That's why this isn't going to look exactly like it is in another three to four weeks, right? By the end, we'll have different encumbrances. So that's my perspective. Councilwoman Berentine?
I do think...
More time or... Go ahead.
I do believe that spending the premium within the confines of what the bond said is, is very doable. I am concerned, you've got a lot of constituents that still believe that it was a $27 million thing and it's...
People are having a hard time hearing you. Maybe just pull it up on your budget there or something.
I think people still have a little bit of difficulty with the kind of maneuvering with it. I do want it to be capital projects, however. It was stated over and over again that we certainly don't want a 20 or 30 or 10 or 15. We don't bond vehicles. There are certain things that it's just not a wise thing to do, so we want to have a little bit of discussion about some of that. For the capital improvement, for the building itself, for the, for what was intended on there, I do want to have, I think that's in keeping with it. However, I think Councilmember Russell brings up a, Mayor Protem Russell, my apologies, brings up a good point is that we have to make sure we have the money, how much we have, and that we're making sure that we're looking at the projects and keeping our financial responsibilities for, for the stewardship of this money. We cannot, it's not appropriate for us to just hand over $5.6 million and expect that to happen. We have to represent the citizens. So while I agree with the mayor, I do agree that we would be keeping with it. I don't think it would be a bad idea to pay the debt down either. I think that would be keeping in the confines of the whole bond thing too. But if we spend this, then I want to make sure, one, that we have the money, that it hasn't been doubled encumbered and two, money is fungible. And just because we have this money here, are we taking away somewhere else where we're not sustainable and we need to make sure that we're, that we're taking an eye on that? So I don't think that it would be a long delay, but I do believe that we need to make sure that we've squared up the money. And it does give a feeling that we're trying to push this into this budget and it hasn't, I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate either. So I would like to get the questions that I've asked answered and Councilmember Questa and Mayor Protem and then we could move forward. I don't think that would take very long.
Councilmember Sierra?
I guess my uneasiness with this entire subject is just the fact that it does feel rushed, but understanding just some of the questions that were brought up, it sounds like the additional debt service for this, what was it, 5.6 million puts us at about, the entire debt service overall would put us right under $50 million, I believe, just based off of this...
Five of them.
What's that? Well, we'll get those answers at some point.
Yeah, they gave us a minimum.
Right. So, but also understanding that there's an opportunity cost if we don't move forward with this, that there's going to be other capital projects that we would have to push off in 2020, 2021, other infrastructure projects. At this point, I do want to move forward with it, but I do need to understand some of the numbers that are, or some of the questions that are being asked.
So just to answer the question of how it's being rushed, I don't think it was being rushed.
Well, just for me personally.
Well, it might be like that, so that's helpful to know. But Mayor Protem and I went to the mayor manager meeting for scheduling and there was this long list of these and they've been, they've been showing up every week, premium issue that's going to come before us for a regular meeting to make a decision.
Right.
And the time's coming where we have to have this conversation first before we can put those on the, want to put those on the regular budget.
Mayor, will each of us be able to address every person when they speak?
No.
Okay, you had...
I wanted to answer a question and I normally don't do that. I know the past mayor did, but I don't usually do that. I just did want to answer that. There's no rush in my mind. It's really what came up in the regular listing of things, so we're saying we need to have a conversation. So on to Councilmember...
Actually, I would agree with you that I think it's being, I do agree with that.
I'm comfortable moving forward. Councilmember Questa?
I would like to postpone as well. I feel a little bit anxious doing it. I want to get to yes. I think that our folks at EP do a tremendous amount of work. I want them to have all the tools they need. Again, I think the bond language allows for this, but there's just a few holes in the numbers that I think could be plugged. I wouldn't mind now that we've got this on a study session, hearing some feedback from citizens as well, anybody has to chime in. But I hope it gets back quick. I'm happy to resume this conversation as quickly as we can get it back in front of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Mayor Protem Russell?
I would like to wait to get the information back as well. And I don't think it should take too long to do that, so.
All right. So we will, so do you know what you're needing to bring back to us? That's what I'm concerned about. Okay.
First and foremost, I appreciate the questions that have been asked because given that this is my first time presenting in front of all of you, it's, it's hard to know exactly what information you'll be looking for. So I hope, I hope I will hit the mark the next time. The one thing that I did want to point out at the bottom of page 291, it does say the 2018 and 19 expenditures amounts are high level estimates. So again, kind of sticking to the original thing, the original comment that I made, this is the total spending regardless of what year it happens in. You know, it's going to fluctuate depending on the timing of spending, of spending, and I think we mentioned that. And then I also wanted to talk about just the statement, the official statement, shows the total amount of debt, including interest that would be paid back, and that was the $42.8 million figure that I mentioned earlier. So I wanted to mention that. So thank you for giving me that opportunity. And yes, I do know exactly what you're asking for.
Okay, great. If you can make sure what you just said with the 42.8 million and all of that is in that documents to show that so that there's some limits, I think that's what could get confusing to anyone maybe who hasn't had this conversation we've had here, especially for citizens looking at it. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this and...
Thank you.
Mayor Protem and I'll work on probably next week perhaps. Well, it depends on how long it takes you all to get what you need together too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, somehow I didn't note that Cheryl, Councilmember Wink is actually stuck in some sort of a work thing that I can't quite tell, but she is not here and I'm not sure whether she will be by the end of the evening. It appears not, but I'm checking between. All right. Our next item up then is our interim review of resumes for interim city manager. Up at this again, today is Director Maria Gonzalez, who's here to help us through this process.
So we have two duties tonight. We have to, from the four that I send you, I send you four resumes. We need to decide if you're going to interview all four or you want to eliminate one or two or how many do you want to interview. So that will be the first thing that we have to do. And I mean, we can go through the four resumes, we can go person by person, whichever way you think is going to be easier for you, I will be willing to work with you.
Mayor Protem Russell wants to pick us up.
I would just like to ask a question on, I think this council perhaps should decide how we want to move forward. I think there ought to be some discussion on, are we just going to keep moving forward? Are we going to make some decisions about the direction that we want to go? Because I think if, I think it would depend on the decisions that this council wants to make. If we're going to move forward with the current direction that has been established and set for us, that would, that would take a position that we could just move forward. I mean, ultimately, this council is responsible to guide the city. The city manager that we hire, whether the interim city manager or then down the road, the full-time city manager is answerable to this council. Are we, is this council happy with the direction that this city is going right now and, and has been?
With all due respect, I don't think it has to do with selecting the interim. I mean, that's a discussion. You, you are the ones that set policy. This is, this has nothing to do with policy setting. We have a saying in Spanish that we said, backwards, not even to take impulse. Okay? We always have to move forward, so we're here tonight to decide out of the four candidates that you have for interim, how many you want to interview. What that interim is going to get as their goals to work on, yeah, that's entirely up to you. So I mean, that's, I don't understand what the question is. I'm sorry.
Are you finished, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I, Mayor Protem Russell, I think these are two separate conversations. I think if we want to talk about different direction, the city, I think that is a separate conversation. But I think right now, the question is just moving forward with the interim interview interim interview process. And with that, since we only have four interim candidates, I would be comfortable interviewing the four and not cutting any of them out right now.
Your Councilmember, Berentine.
I would agree, although I greatly appreciate you bringing that conversation up, and I think that we need to set that as soon as possible. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I think we need to set that discussion up as soon as possible so that we go into the next phase of this. But I'm not sure that it's as integral, I would agree with Councilmember Martinez, that it's not as integral at this point to try and come up with that. I mean, we need to make sure that we're doing business and that we're moving forward, so this is just the first phase of it. I don't think that's going to set a direction, I don't think we're setting a direction or administrative philosophy or culture with the interim. I don't see that we're doing that. And I wouldn't, and if I've got that you're, what you were looking for wrong, then please, I'm asking you to correct it. And Councilmember Martinez, I would agree with her that I just think I'll forward to interview would be fine. If you could let me know whether what I've stated is accurate or not, please.
Can I allow Councilmember Sierra to go next and then come back to you? Okay.
I agree with Councilmember Martinez, I think we should interview all four, and I also agree that we probably should have a discussion, as Mayor Protem discussed, because I think, obviously, we need, yeah, we need to set a direction for the city, and I don't think that we've been doing a great job of that, so.
Mayor Protem?
And I just, and I'm okay with what Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember Berentine and Councilmember Sierra shared. And I do just want to make sure that we have this discussion, because I think what has happened in the past is we just start moving forward and we don't have this discussion. And I think it's important for us to have this discussion before we move on to the city manager that we will call. Because, so I do agree that for the interim, it's not that important, and I'm okay with-
Would you like to weigh in on the four candidates?
I'm okay with going ahead and interviewing all of them.
Councilmember, question.
Four is good. I think a gut check, us all getting together and really seeing where we are and in the direction that we feel we're going is always helpful. I mean, even if that was something that we did annually, biannually, whatever, I'm always up for those conversations. I think that they're good and they're healthy. I don't mind them having, happening in public either, you know, I think that's good, let everybody see where we're at. So I would always be a willing participant in that, and four sounds good for the applicants. Thank you.
I would agree with the four too, and I would, I would hope that in our next stage after we find the interim is that we actually think through, what are we looking for? What do we agree on that we're looking for? We might disagree on some things we're looking for, we did the last time when we were looking for a city manager, so we're not all going to be on the same page, but at least having it out there and clear, I think we can have some, we can decide what our common ground is. I think that should be part of the process, and the, I believe, you know, in the past anyway, the only other time I've done this, we did, we did have a conversation like that. And we had lots of it along the way, especially as we were interviewing people, because we abducted different ways in which we saw people present. So I think it's a great question. I think let's plan it, and you and I get to set the schedule, so we'll make sure it happens, right?
All right.
If that's okay with everybody. All right, so it looks like we're on to four. That makes it easy.
Do you have another decision to make as a council? Do you want to make those candidates available for the public? Or do you not? Because I need to schedule those, and I already built some time, whether you want it or not. We have, I have set up the applicants for an hour, and we'll talk about the interview guide next, but there is half an hour in between for us to discuss, and I could tell the candidates to stay 15 minutes after the interview to interact with the public in the atrium, if that's what the council wants to do.
I think the city attorney sent us some information this last week on this. I don't know if you want to review it in terms of what we can or cannot do.
Yeah, the, I sent you the rules from Open Meeting and Open Records Act, so you'd know what elements of the documents that are submitted have to be made public, and that is only the documents submitted by identified finalists. In this particular case, since you're going to be interviewing the last four, I think we all consider that finalists.
Finalists, yeah.
You, there is a caveat with an Open Meetings Act about use of executive session, but again, because this is an interim, I didn't assume that you'd want to do any of this inside of an executive session. Again, because it's an interim, we probably will have a preset wage offering, we won't be negotiating a long-term salary or any of those kind of things, so it's just a much more simplistic process. If any of you are interested in conducting any part of this in executive session, it'd be helpful for me to know so that I can review to make sure that we'll stay in compliance with open meetings.
Thank you. I personally am not interested in having executive sessions at this level at all. I think the only time that it would make sense for in the regular city manager one was at the very early stage, before people want to be publicly out there that they're looking at the job. And once that phase is over, I'm, then I think it's all public. And it's only to protect them, not us, because we want to have people apply. But that would be in the first phase, unless we decide from the beginning, everyone has to be public if they apply, which might limit the number of applications we get. But Mayor Protem Russell.
There is nothing that any of these candidates, it doesn't bother them that, I mean, they're not protecting a current job or anything like that.
I just follow, you know, what the letter says. Until they are finalists, we don't have to make them public, so I didn't make them public until after tonight. We have decided that the four are finalists, so now we have to follow what the instructions are, they have to be made public, so I will put it on the council communication, and everybody will have access to the resumes with their names. As you noticed, the documents I sent you are numbered, so they didn't have the names, just to follow what the letter says.
In answer to your question though, no, these, this is not a group of people who are trying to protect the information from anyone else.
And we need to vote tonight in there, probably to release the names and make it, or do we not need to do that?
You don't need to vote to release them, because they are released per the Open Records Act. By identifying these as the four people you intend to interview and decide upon, that makes them your defective finalists.
But we don't need to go in there to make that decision, we can just do it by consensus here.
I think that just because a lot of members of the public don't watch the study session, that I would prefer that you make a motion that the four resumes that have been received, that the individuals who submitted the four resumes all be identified as finalists and be brought forward for an interview.
Do you want to do that in there tonight?
Okay.
That'd be great, thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
No, it was just a point of information. If they are the finalists, then they just need to be identified with that, I would agree, that we just need to make it public, it can't be done in here. And I would agree that we certainly do not do it in executive session.
So do we, point of information, do we need a motion, do we need a motion or-
In there. Except all four as finalists, just a simple, in the council requesting.
Great.
So I will set up their schedules to stay 15 minutes after in case the public wants to interact with them in the atrium. I will let the candidates know that the days, we have interviews the third and the ninth. So they will have an hour with the council, with the questions, and then they will have 15 minutes after their interview to interact with the public in the atrium.
Councilmember Martinez.
Are we noticing something to the public that they can be available there in the atrium for them?
We'll post the record, this is based on the decisions council makes tonight.
So it'll just be like a meeting notice that somebody, people would know, not necessarily that people would know, like it's an open house or something that they could come and chat with people.
As you may also, if you all talk about some people, please wanted to post something on the internet to make sure that maybe you may become that's something that's certain.
I think she's definitely something different.
I'm only trying to get information to what she said, is it sounds as if it's trying to be set up as a way for the public to interact with them, how will we notice that so the public knows they can?
The meetings are already posted. We posted the meetings.
I'll have to follow up with you, because that's not typically what I get involved with, I don't know.
Good question.
I mean, because they'll just think it's a meeting, and not necessarily that they can speak to people, and that's all I'm asking.
I think the idea is to have a very informal time, and we can put that on all of the city's communication site, the websites, the postings, and let everyone know that if they would like to have an opportunity to meet these candidates, that there'd be, you know, cookies arranged.
That it's being arranged. Thank you very much, that clarifies it.
And that's out, but there'll be a clear time where we're interviewing, so they'll know that's happening too, because they can listen for that, or they can watch that.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, and it is a public meeting, but, and I will be glad to help monitor that, to, you know, facilitate questions or that sort of thing.
Councilmember Martinez.
So we're going to have an interview for an hour, and then the candidate is going to mingle with the public or whatever, and then are we going to be there mingling with them too, to see how they interact? No.
The plan is, the plan is, we have to go over, or if you, if you see the interview guys that I sent you, we have to review them after every candidate, so we can stay here, review them, close the interview, and then receive the next candidate. We don't have a lot of time, so.
Okay.
I think that that answered.
Yeah, kind of, I was just thinking, I think the interactions with the community are going to be much more important when we do the final position, so we'll have to think through that a lot more than just this, you know, half an hour, so just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I already have a plan for that, so that will come later on. Once we finish with this process, we can talk about step two, yes.
Thank you.
Great, we have 10 minutes, and we need to get some questions that are clear here.
Yes, so you all have the interview guide that I sent you, humble approach to it, but it's very conducive. So I didn't receive any feedback, so we can do it now. We need to eliminate 10 questions, and that's just due to time, okay? We have one hour with every applicant, so, you know, that is a limited amount of time that we have to ask questions. If we ask 23, the candidates are going to be pressed for time to give us complete answers on it, and the idea of that interview is to get to know these candidates, so we can make a decision by the end of it. So if we go through the pages and you tell me we can, you know, do a consensus, I will write the number, the number of the questions that most people want to eliminate from every page, and we come up with a interview guide for Wednesday night, because that's our first interview, is Wednesday after tomorrow, so.
Councilmember Sierra.
Well, right away, we can eliminate, what are your greatest strengths and weaknesses? I've never liked that question, and so.
Okay. There we go. I just, I just took some of those questions from the guys at the ICMA samples, I don't like that.
Too soon?
I think what I was concerned about these questions is that they're sort of for the city manager as the long term, and what I wanted was a little bit more about how does someone help a city in this time of, where it's just six months, it's an interim. And what, so I like your first question, what from your past actually, you know, makes you ready for the interim position? And then, and then start asking questions about evidence to be able to collaborate with others and keep a collaborative climate, so examples for that would be really important to me. That's where I think our climate needs.
And that's one of the competencies right there.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we have-
Those are the two things that I'm most concerned about.
I totally, so we have number four, is anybody opposed to getting it out? We need to get 10 out, so.
Nine to go.
Okay, nine to go. And then we go to customer focus, we can eliminate one of the two in there, either question five or question six, any preferences there?
Which questions were there?
Five and six. Five or six, sorry, my proposition was-
It's under customer focus, right?
Yes.
Which is the, tell me about a time when you reorganized?
Yeah, and in the documents, question one and question two.
Yeah, and then secondly, give an example of when you initiated a change in process, right?
Yeah.
Anybody have any feedback?
I think for the interim one, I don't know that these are as important as they will be for the final candidate. I could eliminate the second one in this one.
Six.
Give me an example of when you initiated a change in process or operations.
Yep. Everybody agree on that one?
Then we'd be leaving one, which is five in yours.
Five, tell me about a time when you reorganized, okay? Then we go to performance management, we have number seven that starts, describe a situation when you had an underperforming employee, or eight, which is tell me about a time when you were able to improve the morale of an unmotivated employee or coworker.
Councilmember Martinez.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, in this, in this, in these two, I prefer to keep the question, tell me about a time when you were able to improve the morale of an unmotivated employer or coworker, or really get your coworkers excited about something. I would prefer that one.
Okay.
Member Sierra.
I was just going to say, can we skip those questions, just because I was looking at talent development, and I wasn't sure if that was really pertinent for an interim position? So if we were to remove those, and then come back whether or not we wanted to remove the ones in the performance management.
I just want to remind you that we have performance evaluations in April for the whole city, and the interim may be still here. That's why I put the talent management in there, it needs to be somebody that is vested somehow into that. That will be the time of transition, and it's a very important time for all the employees.
But would that be more leaning on the experience of the current, I'm trying to think what your title is now.
Acting, the EP city manager.
But I was just wondering, just because this person's in an interim, coming from the outside may not have as much information to do that type of evaluation of a-
No, but they, no, they won't do the evaluation, but they have to manage the whole process. It's a whole city process. I was talking more on philosophy of that candidate, more than managing the actual evaluation process.
Finished, Councilmember Berentine.
I agree with Councilmember Martinez, I think the one for the morale is probably more a role that the interim will be playing, and the other one should probably be eliminated. I don't want them to think that they're being put in a position where they're going to, hopefully they're really not going to be assessing employees on that kind of level on their, on their own, I would rather how they're going to motivate people, so I would agree with you that I would like to get rid of the one and keep the other.
Okay.
I'm fine with that too. Any other objections? If not, let's keep moving.
Relationship building, we have question nine, which starts, tell me about a time when you build a relationship and establish rapport with several coworkers, or number 10, tell me about a time when you anticipated an issue or conflict between coworkers at work and took action to address the situation.
Councilmember, question.
I'm not wild about the first question. I think it's generic, it's kind of broad. Part of me thinks that if somebody's made it to this level, and I'm sure we've all at least reviewed those resumes, that they've at least done number one many, many times over.
The, the philosophy behind behavioral questions is that you will repeat what you already did, so we want us to, they, we wanted to hear what they did before, so we can predict what they're going to do in the future.
I'd still scratch it myself.
All right, do you like the second one there, under?
I, that one, I would hope it doesn't come down conflict, I'd much rather hear how they resolve conflict than how they made a friend. Myself.
So, contact question. Councilmember Berentine.
How many more questions do we have to get rid of?
We have six more.
Okay, and I don't want to put you in a position where you have to defend the reason why you put them in. Are there any questions that you think would be better to be left out?
Not really, I mean, I gave you a whole array of questions that I thought were pertinent to the job description.
But you've put together a package that you know is too many questions, so we do have to get rid of six more.
Yeah, so here's, you're bringing up a good point, because we need to be next door, and it's a big night. Are you willing to spend some time at the end tonight, come up with questions, or do you want to come early on?
No, I'd rather do it tonight.
No, that's not going to help, you need them.
I want, yeah, I want everybody to be prepared for, we owe it to the, to the-
We put too many in there, and I don't want to put her in a position where she's defending them either.
Yeah, you're right.
She put them in there because she thought they were pertinent questions, so that makes it kind of difficult. I would be more than happy to meet after the meeting if you would like to.
We didn't, so we can't? We can't do it during Councilmember Choice time? Not really?
During Councilmember Choice, it's also during the regular meeting.
During the regular meeting, okay, so we could come up with more then.
We'll come up with our other six then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be here.